Good evening and welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, March 17, 2022 meeting, and happy St. Patrick's Day. The time being 7:00 PM. Sherry Alberti requests a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275, Zoning, Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table abuses, Use L-10, in Section 3.2.2, to allow a locksmith automotive security services as a home occupation at 201 North Street. Property is located in the R-40 residential zoning district and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. So, Mrs. Alberti, there are five of us, as you can see. Mr. Schiffy is the building commissioner. Where are the five zoning board members? You know, Ms. Gray is our administrative assistant. All of us will participate in this matter, but only Dave, Kim, and I can vote. And in order to approve your application, our vote has to be unanimous, all three of us. Dave, Kim, and I have to vote in favor.
Okay.
So, once you're ready, you have the floor to explain. You know, as part of your application, we did get your write-up, but inasmuch as this is a public hearing, if you can go through various reasons that you believe that you're -- you should have a home occupation special permit, you know, please provide us with that information.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. We've been residents of Foxborough since 87, February of 87, and we've lived on North Street since September of 88. And we have basically been doing the same thing since we moved to Foxborough. My husband is a master security technician in residential, commercial, industrial, government, and automotive. Automotive is really the least of what we do. It's more started as a hobby with him, and then everything transgressed into a technical part of it. So, that would be 1099 people that come in as subcontractors and do most of that. We work hand-in-hand with all of the security technicians in New England, meaning ADT, Protective One, FEMA, US Marshal. We work with Stanley Controls. So, we're the button-up people, and meaning that when the inspector needs to come in and approve for fire safety doors or ADA compliance and locking systems, we're the ones they call to work with all the other contractors that are on jobs. My husband is the sole person. We've been training people for 35 years. We use a three-minute, three-day, three-week, three-month period. In order for people to learn, we can kind of figure out whether they're going to make it through three years. These last two years have been extremely difficult in trying to find someone. We are registered as essential workers through the US Marshal and Homeland Security. I have all of those credentials. I've already set up the employee entrance so that we would be non-advasive to anyone on either side, or all four sides, or anyone on the street, actually, to where the employees would just park in our driveway and come in the back entrance for an employee check-in, and they would get their materials and things, and basically their job list, and go on the road. So, that area has a fire safety door, has an exit panel, and we have the smokes. We have everything for inspections up and almost in place completely. It's been eight days that we've really had to kind of do this. It's been a total of about 15 days, counting the weekends, in order to get everything in order. I've made it safe for them to be able to come in, check in. It's all electronic. We do electronics. And all of our registrations and lights and -- locksmiths in the state of Massachusetts do not require a license like plumbers and electricians. We're grandfathered in as the oldest profession. Well, we don't want to talk about all the oldest ones, but you know, that really is the first lock came to Boston Lock from Germany many, many years ago. And so, the credentials that you actually need to have are more important than a license. A license is just a fee, and you pass a test and whatever, but to hold the registrations and the certificates as being a locksmith, you have to really go through -- you have to have several. So, I think I put it on there, the names of the -- those are the most important. American locksmith, Massachusetts Locksmith Association, all of those show all of our credentials for how long they've been. Since they've put technology in order, some of them get updated, and so it's kind of like your medical records, they disappear, so it'll say since 2011 instead of since 2000, I mean, 1970. But the majority of all of this is that he is -- he's more than capable and able, God willing, to be able to do this job and train. And I've been with him for 38 years now, doing all the business side of it. So, all of our certificates are in order, our workman's compensation, everything when the employees come in is there, along with everything that's needed for the safety part of it, and OSHA, and all this other stuff. Eight to four is our regular hours. We wouldn't be disruptive at all. There would be really no walk-in customers at all now. We've given up about, I would say, one-fourth of our business by doing this. We're in our 60s now. We're hoping to be able to pass this on to our grandchildren. Our children have all done it at different times during their try, period. One son, three daughters. We're hoping that they might figure out that this is an essential business. It's a very rare trade. Everyone that we've ever trained has either come back to us or started their own business. So, it's a trade that's not really spoken of much, and it really should be. We started a program that would teach the high school. We would be willing to actually do a trade with the high school. There's just so many opportunities to learn, and it's something that is never going to disappear, unless we all pass at the same time. And we've kind of gone through that these last two years, trying to figure out. We've lost a lot of people in their 60s and 70s to this trade. And we're just really asking that you accept us back into -- this is where we started, at North Street Locksmith, but it wasn't real. It was just a pipe dream with a baby when we first started, and it was a walk-in handshake in Norwood that just happened at the right time. The only way you can really leave this business is by passing or passing it on to someone. And the gentleman, Donnie Anderson, who worked for -- who now works for Public Works of Walpole for years, since 93, he wanted to retire, and they just met, and it just worked. And we've had a lot of good people from Foxborough supporting us all along the way. We work with a lot of people around the surrounding town. So, our plea is that you accept us and let us be able to bring prosperity to Foxborough and another generation, hopefully, in the security business.
So, how many employees?
We -- counting my husband and I, we are both employees. We have three others at this time, so there's a total of five.
And are the others related?
My brother is, and he's been living with us for the past year.
Mm-hmm.
He's not a trained locksmith. He is an assistant apprentice. He's more of a handyman, which really comes in handy, not only to our property and practice, but to -- a lot of the jobs that we do would be hauling out -- most people don't even know what a locksmith is until they need one. We say you can feel safe with us is our motto, because I'm more of a dispatcher. When someone calls, they're in a panic. They're either locked out of their house, or locked out of their car, or they just fired someone, or someone just passed, or they just got divorced. I've heard everything. We've had absolutely everything that could come by our table. You have to be able to talk them down. You have to be able to be reassuring. You have to -- a lot of times, we think that if you show your compassion in the most important times, then that would be something that is word-of-mouth, and we don't have to advertise for -- we're not doing it for that. A lot of times, we've actually just helped people by asking them if they had AAA, or to call the police department. We know the difference between what would be needed for the fire department. There's all different types of people you don't know. The dog is lost in the car, the baby is crying upstairs. These are just residential problems, and then you've got huge problems where they need you immediately. So, having trainees on the job, learning how to communicate, and learn how to be able to handle themselves in a professional manner during such time, it's so different than being in a union or being in a government job where you're trained in six weeks or something, and you all have a protocol, and you do certain things differently. We're a very small family business, and we always tell everyone, we're going to know within three days or three weeks whether this is for you. We're going to give you that much time to be able to know, but you have to be a part of our family. So, when you ask if we have any relatives with us, it's basically the employees become family.
But they're not family members, so.
They're not family now.
So, what work is done, or would be done, you know, within the home versus work that's done outside?
So, for the last two and a half years, I've been working from home with the paperwork.
Okay.
So, I've kind of learned essential can do this from home without having to go to the business. So, this kind of made this transition a little bit easier for us, at least that part. As far as what we'd be doing at the property for work, really, the guys would just come, park their vehicles, walk through the employee area to -- in the outside, to the rear entrance to get their.
Rear building? We're talking about the rear building or the front building?
The rear building is -- so, it's just the garage. It -- in the garage is where we've set it up. We weren't planning on doing this.
Very back of the property?
No, no, no. So, our property is -- I'm sure everybody knows our property by now. It's been a process. We're almost there, so that would really be helpful if we could just get it all done. The first house is where we live still, supposedly. This is supposed to come down when we're actually finished. We're unsure of how that's -- that process. We're not at that process yet. It didn't have anything to do with the business, so our little house has nothing to do with the business. That's where I -- except for me working out of it in my back office that I made for these past two and a half years. But now, I'll be in, I guess, both. It's like an alleyway of about four and a half feet. It's literally, here's my -- the house from 1951, and then the house that was started in 2011.
But I don't think you have an occupancy permit for that.
No, we don't, not yet. Temporary is in the making, and we're hoping to have it by April or June. It really matters. We have -- the employees have use of the -- my home if they have to go to the bathroom, if that's the purpose, but we also have the outhouse, is what you call it. I don't know. The port-a-john on the property. They're not really going to be there. There's no one going to be occupied in the building. That's why this can kind of work while we're in this transition, is because what's there is just all the materials that are needed, the tools. We've got the phones and everything set up so that I can transition into this, but they will walk in, get their assignments, and then leave, so that.
But today, you have no occupancy permit for that rear building?
I'm sorry?
As of today, you do not have an occupancy permit.
Today, we don't.
Are you using that building right now for the business?
Just as what I said we were doing. I mean, the guys come in, they get their keys, and they leave. And then they help on the property itself, but they're on the road.
And is this building completed? I'm looking -- the drawings that I'm looking at, is this building -- this is the rear building?
The rear building.
Okay. And is it -- is the building under construction or complete?
It's still under construction, so it passed all of its -- what do you call it?
At what phase are we at, is what I'm asking, you know?
We're in the last phase, we hope. That's what we're hoping. I mean, everything's been closed. It's been a very interesting process, but we need water, and we need -- I don't know what the other department is, but electric has been in there. All of our permits are up to date. Everybody's been in there. Inspections, basically, is every day. Who's on inspections here? Oh, I -- I'm sorry. I don't know why you're --
Go ahead. What's happening?
At this time, I looked into files, and the only thing that's been -- the last inspection was done, I think, last year. It was a partial insulation, so the insulation was never completed, from what I -- from what we have on record. I'm saying what we have on record. No finals for the electrical, no finals for the plumbing.
No, the finals for the electrical are not done.
Or the plumbing, or the gas, or the building.
No finals are done.
Yeah.
But the insulation was done. We got the okay to put everything up.
Okay. I have to look into that, but from what I found today and in our files, I only saw a partial insulation, but I can look into that, but we have to get the finals. Technically.
Because all the walls and everything up.
Technically, under the building code in Chapter 1, it is unlawful to even occupy a building that does not have a certificate of occupancy.
Meaning?
Even anything, putting furniture in there, anything. It's illegal. It's unlawful.
Okay.
So, we -- I mean, because it's to protect you.
I understand. I mean, because. I mean, that's -- I totally understand.
If something does happen, I'm just going to say it out there, is your insurance company is not going to cover you. So, God forbid, fire starts in that building, all your tools and your equipment and stuff like that will not be covered.
Or someone gets hurt on the property.
Or somebody gets hurt on the property.
Oh, I understand that. So, I just got all the workman's comp. I have three different insurance companies that have looked at everything, and we're in the middle of finishing up the smokes now. So, that's the -- because of this transition happening the way that it did, we were not planning on leaving yet. We weren't planning on leaving at all until this.
But it would be my recommendation to the board that before they even issue a special permit, and you have an occupancy in place.
Okay.
Okay? Because you have employees entering that building.
Okay.
And that's a safety issue.
Okay.
And it sounds like before they can approach for an occupancy permit, the other things like the electrical and the plumbing needs to be wrapped up.
Absolutely. All the finals have to be pretty much done.
Right, so.
I mean, there is a process. We could do a TCO. I don't like doing those, because then it gets pushed down the road even further, but it can be done, and it has been done. But that would be -- I would fall on the board if they feel comfortable with that.
How long has that house been -- well, I'll call it a house. How long has that house been under construction?
Since 2011. The --
Yeah, 10, 11 years, yeah.
Yeah. We went through several hardships, but the foundation went in in 2007, and it wasn't touched until the mid-'11 because of -- that was the first things that were pulled, was construction and self-employed.
So, really, so the foundation went in in 2007, so that, at least by my thinking, construction started then, even though you just pulled the foundation.
It was just a foundation.
But it was underway, you pull a permit, so you've been at it 17.
A lot of permits.
15 years, and, well, and there's still more to be done.
We're in the final -- we got more done this past year than we -- it's been an interesting haul, but.
Except you're not done until Mr. Schiffy and his department says you're done.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. So, as far as where would we have the employees report to, the little house? Would that be possible? Is that with a TO?
Well, that's another whole question, because you're asking for a special.
Permit.
Permit. And, you know, we haven't even -- personally, I don't think we can really consider a special permit in property that doesn't have an occupancy permit. That's my feeling. I don't know how.
No, I would agree, because she can't.
What about the?
She can't use the building, how could she have a business out of it, you know?
What about the little building that they report there instead? I have an occupancy there. They really only just come to work to get in their trucks and leave, unless they're working on the property, doing things that we've been doing in order to get the property ready, which is safety.
Yeah.
I know it's an odd -- it's a very -- the entire process has not been ordinary. It's extremely unique, as am I.
And then, once you have an occupancy permit, then we would need to consider the business, and it's more to it than just where they're going to report to. There's the parking of your vehicles, the trucks at night.
Yeah. All of that's in place already. The vehicles have been there all along, because they're ours. So, the only ones that we kept in Norwood, which was a real hard thing to get them out of Norwood during excise tax time, you have to pay both towns, even if they're not going to be in both. There was only two that were in Norwood, and the guys would drive to Norwood and pick up their vans there. So, we have a pickup truck, a Ranger. We have a -- so, we have one Ranger, one larger pickup truck, and one van that for the three employees are out on the road. And then we have my husband, who is either with them on the road or at home, and in another vehicle. He's usually doing estimates and walkthroughs and stuff, so he takes -- there's an old car that's -- I don't know what year to call it. It's a '56 that's been remade to a -- basically, what we do is with re-mod.
Where do you keep the vehicles right now?
We have.
Outside?
We have two inside, and the rest are outside, in the garage.
The old house doesn't have a garage, correct? The existing house, the one that you live in, does not have a garage?
No.
So, you're garaging them in the new house.
Which is?
Which doesn't have a certificate of occupancy.
Well, it has.
Wouldn't that -- wouldn't that cover vehicles?
It has insurance.
It doesn't matter if it has insurance. It doesn't have a certificate. It's unlawful under --
So, we're going to take them out of the?
They should not be in the --
Oh. Wouldn't our insurance company say that? No. I'm sorry.
They'll tell you anything.
I'm finding that out, I guess.
But I'm saying, they do have the right not to pay out, plus it's unlawful under the state building code to occupy any building.
I mean, this whole time, we've had tools from all the contractors, everything in that building.
Oh, I understand that, but it's at your own risk.
Right.
And it's not. It's unlawful, so technically.
I don't like the unlawful part. I am compliant in every way. I do everything. I'm a Girl Scout, CCD teacher. I don't like the unlawful part. You would think that all these other businesses would tell me something like that.
Mm-hmm.
I thank you for telling me.
That's what I'm here for, even if it is bad news.
I mean, my -- in response to your specific question about using the existing house, I think even if we're allowed that, we'd have to come back again with a new house. But if the intent is to utilize the garage of the new house as the location for the business, whether it's keeping equipment, keeping, you know, tools, et cetera, et cetera, there's no place you're going to be doing that in the existing house. So, I guess, you know, we're sort of between a rock and a hard place, but I think really what you need to do is get the work finished.
That's what we're doing. We've got, I mean, our general contractor is working overtime. Our plumber has been missing for two, three months now.
If I may, what is your projected timetable on getting that done?
We were hoping to be done with the next step on inspections in April.
Well, the next step is finals.
Right.
Total finals. If you say all the insulation was done, all your walls are closed in, so it's final electrical, final plumbing, final gas, and then myself, fire department, so it would be done.
We're hoping April. That's really, I mean.
By April?
I'm not sure about water, though.
You mean by water?
April's two weeks.
The water has been an issue with.
So, you don't have any water to that rear building?
No. When they were out there last, I was.
Then you won't get a file of plumbing.
No.
So, therefore, you won't get a final building.
Well, we're working on it. I mean, if it keeps staying in this, in the 50s, I think we'll get water done.
Because it's --
Hoping.
Again, it's unlawful for me to sign off on something that none of the electrical, plumbing.
All the electricals.
Signed off, signed off and finalized by my staff.
Have you heard from?
I have not heard.
Moret? Okay. Well, that's good to know. I'll talk to him tomorrow.
So, now, you've applied for this as a home occupation intensive use, and within that, Item 4, no more than two persons in addition to family members residing in the residence may be employed within the principal residence or -- so, you're limited to two employees plus family members.
Two employees? Only two employees?
Plus family members.
That aren't family members.
That aren't.
That aren't family members.
But she indicated that her brother is residing in the house at the current time.
Yeah.
So, I think she's okay on that.
But I think we'd have to examine that.
Yeah.
And if she met it, you're capped at that, you know? You're going to be -- if we can get the issue on you list, you're going to be pretty much in a position where you can't really expand.
We would be looking to open with our.
Somewhere else.
Family somewhere, yeah, like a storefront eventually.
Yeah, as long as you're not there.
But, yeah, no, we're never going to do a storefront on our property. I mean, we're hoping that, you know, right now, we have 12 grandkids. The oldest just turned 11. The youngest is one. We're hoping that our -- I mean, our children are busy with their children right now, but I mean, the hope for expansion is our son-in-law is a CPA. He can do that from his own place. He doesn't have to do it from here. He can take on a different part of it. We can do a storefront even with, in the center of town if we are able to find a place. We just weren't able to find anything that fast to move an entire storefront and had to weigh the circumstances. Is it better to lose 25% of the business and just keep doing what we do? We're really going to just be doing -- like, during these last two years, what we've done is just, well, the first year, we didn't even have any employees. They were on wherever they were, hiatus, whatever. They weren't -- we couldn't have them at the, even at the building that we rented. So, for that was the first six months. So, it was just me and my other. So it was just me and my husband. So he would just get up in the morning and get in the truck and go take care of it all. And then eventually, they started, when we were opening up, we got another person back and another one back, but they weren't full-time. They're not really all full-time either, they're, they're always less than forty hours.
Doesn't matter.
But they're not at the house, you know?
But they are at the house.
For check-in and check-out.
They come in and check out. And so under the bylaws, as we read this, no more than two persons in addition to family members may be employed within the principal residence. And of course, even just in that one phrase, we get back to principal residences. And now what we're talking about is they are two buildings, one of which is not lawfully able to be occupied.
Right.
So, I mean, every, so it seems like every ti- all of this, you know, number two on here is, "The area devoted to the home occupation shall not exceed forty percent of the habitable floor area of the principal residence." So what you're asking us to look at is the new building, but forty percent of zero habitable floor area. So zero percent is allowed to be used, according to the bylaws that the town of Foxborough's residents have wrote it on. So we're, we're just, we are trying, we're, we are trying to understand what you're saying.
I totally appreciate that.
And, but I, I, I just want you to understand what we're looking at on this side of the table is, this is, this is, you know, this is very, very difficult. I mean, one other thing that is, you know, not more, certainly, we're, we have bigger fish to fry here, shall we say, but one of the other things is, storage of material or products outside is prohibited. And right here, you have, we need a dumpster, so...
Right, well, and I spoke to someone upstairs and I...
We're not, the dumpster is the smallest of our issues right now, but this is not e- this, you know, this isn't...
And even all of that is academic because it's, there's no CO.
Exactly, right, exactly. And so, I mean, this would be a whole lot easier for us if you had an occupancy.
Oh, trust me, I understand that.
And then, because I'm not even sure how we, where we...
I, I, I think we'd be exceeding our authority if we tried to...
Right, I, I mean...
Do anything with that.
And the occupancy permit is not just an issue as far as your ability to utilize the home and, and what Mr. Shippey can and cannot legally do, but you don't want customers to be coming inside.
Oh, there are no customers.
Well, you, you've indicated that there, there would be.
Yes.
You, you indicated in your write-up that there would be.
We're, you said all, "We will no longer have walk-in customer service, service or services. All requests must now be by appointment," so what you...
Correct. Well, that, we go to them, we service them, so we're, we're a service company.
No, I understand, but in, in this, it reads as if, and someone could call in and make an appointment and come to...
Oh, no, they wouldn't come to us.
Okay, that's...
No, I'm sorry if that's rewritten wrong. No, we don't have any customers coming to us, it would be them calling for an appointment for some previous, and possibly the reason why it's, sounds confusing is because it is, because before, customers would call and ask, "Are we open?" And we had a storefront and they could come, but we don't have a storefront anymore. And that has been a thing that I've had to do with Norwood to get used to the idea. The Lock Clinic has been in the, in Norwood since seventy-eight, so...
Their, their determination's gonna be all predicated on the primary dwelling.
I understand that.
Your primary dwelling, as it stands now, is the small house in the front.
Correct.
So, again, I hate using that word, it's unlawful for them to sit here and issue a special permit under the guidelines of the bylaws.
For the small house?
That, I'm gonna leave that for them, but I'm saying...
I understand that it, it can't be for the big house.
It can't be for the big house or the garage or...
Okay, so can I put anything in the garage? Or do I, where do I put everything that we just moved? We literally pu- put, I mean, so...
I know you're not supposed to have even furniture, like you mentioned, installed or anything like that.
And I don't know that we can answer that question.
I can't, I can't, yeah.
That's not a question for this board.
We put a lot of stuff in storage, we moved a huge bunch of stuff and put a lot in storage and then brought it to the garage and then moved it around because we're still under construction, but I'd like to invite you to come and do the walkthrough so that you can see where, where we're at, because I did not, I was not aware of the fact...
I would love to have a walkthrough.
Yeah, no, I would request it.
Then I can guide you a little bit further and then I can bring the board up to speed on where you're at.
Yes, that would make me very comfortable. As far as the...
But they're still in, they're still in a dilemma.
And another part, I think another part of this is when you get the occupancy permit and you get in there, that front house is supposed to come down.
Well, and I, that was one of my questions, is after that's...
You know, admittedly, I'm sure you agree, it's starting to fall in disrepair, the front house.
Well, that was the whole purpose of why we had to do a different perk test is because, yeah, Mother Nature didn't like the spot that the first one was put in, so that foundation is cracked.
Once you do have the occupancy permit, at that point, there are two houses on the lot, which is against the, the bylaw, the bylaw does not permit that. So at some point in time, Mr. Shippey's gonna require you to demolish that house. I, I didn't help...
Yeah.
It'll almost be, it'll be almost immediately. I would probably want, before I, you receive the CO, I would want an application probably submitted to have the demo- demolition of that, the fir- the front structure raised, so, and then we can go from there. Because I know there's gonna be some transition, you gotta get some stuff off. There's always some transition and, and that, that's understandable. But I would like, I would like to see an application in, in our system for, for that demolition. And then you have a hundred and eighty days to do, do it by law. I think you can do it in less than six months.
Oh, after what we've been...
After you move, move into the rear house.
Well, we just were, we were just tested on how fast we could move out of a whole business. And we really had nowhere else to go. So, you know, this is, our plea now is to just be able to let us have the guys show up, park in our driveway where they've been, get their keys and go out on the road. And they can do it, if we can't do it from the garage for now, we're still gonna be working on getting it ready so that we can do that. Is that allowed to continue, I mean, our construction is basically construction. And you can come any time that you need to tell me whether we can or can't.
They can't grant a special permit on, on, on those bases.
Oh, I, I...
I mean, it's...
We've never, do you ever recall us issuing a temporary special permit for home occupancy? I don't read either.
No, I, like I said, it's a unique situation.
You, you indicated before that you were thinking by April and...
That is the whole...
You started saying, "April's only a couple of weeks away." I mean, are you thinking by the beginning, middle, end, when?
It would have to be at least the end after this. I mean, this put us back financially, but I'm just praying that we stay healthy because we are the business, without the two of us, there is no business. So moving as quickly as we did in getting here to where we are is, is, is our special request is, can we, how do we continue our business without having a place to do our business? If we spend another two or three weeks looking for a place to move everything to do another business, because trust me, we have already asked everyone. It sounds easier than what it actually is.
So you're already out of the location in Norwood?
Yeah, we had no choice.
Okay, that, that's complete, everything's out?
Yes.
Barney?
Lorraine had something.
Go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry.
If, can the board consider if they can store materials in the home and have them work tem- you know, continue working temporarily out of the primary existing residence?
Yeah, I was trying to see if it might qualify as for non-intensive, but then it doesn't allow any employees, so that doesn't work, no.
We had applied in the end of November and December for a home equity loan and were, we were denied because we're still under construction. So basically, because we're still under construction, we've been denied a lot of things and we've still been under construction trying to get this done. That home loan would have made April sound easy.
Thanks won't look at it until you have a cer- certificate of occupancy.
Right.
I, I don't know how they work, but you remember, this has been under construction.
Oh, I, I remember.
You know, we're not on any normal kind of home construction, you know, it's so, people wonder, was it gonna get done?
The entire planet has wondered this. We're known as the little blue house that's overshadowed by the big blue house. It was, started the year my first grandchild was born and he just turned eleven, so... We're giving it to him, so it will get done.
Can you start in the say something?
I, I don't know whether this is applicable or not applicable, but I see that there's a letter dated March seventeenth, which is today, but twenty-fourteen, regarding a retaining wall.
Yes. That's, that put us back by like five years. It was brought up to us that, when we had the property survey, that it was done wrong in the back because someone was now doing something for the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot on Route One, and they brought it to the attention of the neighbor next to our neighbor. So our property is R forty, behind us was cons- it was not supposed to be built on, and then in ninety-seven, it was. It became a cul-de-sac, so there's a stretch of property in between there. But S one is our next-door neighbor, and so it's, we're really considered more of a corner piece of property than we are, just, we're the beginning of R forty. But where our property actually goes, all the way up in the back, we weren't the ones that moved the marker, somebody did when they poured the wall. It's over by eleven inches on one side and six on another. It's fifty feet difference and it started a very interesting process that we were not ready for. And we were friends for twenty-five years and then we weren't. But we are back to being twenty-five, you know, like we got a... We were granted an easement, is that the right words?
That's what I was gonna ask, was there an easement?
Yes, yeah, we, and I pay her a hundred dollars a year, she said she only wanted a dollar. I mean, we're friends, it was just a matter of lawful, unlawful, all that stuff. I mean, the two of us were just like, what is happening? When they poured the concrete, they poured it closer on her wall and we told her we would make a garden there. Her husband passed away, we were gonna do a memorial, we were gonna do all kinds of things, she didn't... And just two days ago, well, it wasn't two days ago, two days ago, we took, the tree fell down in her yard during that windstorm. And we had been telling her we would take it down and she kept saying no. So it's more of a, "I don't really wanna inconvenience you, I don't wanna inconvenience you," friendship forever. And the tree went down and we still went over there and got rid of it, but it took down our fence on that wall.
I'm sorry, the tree is not our...
Oh, well, that's that wall.
I'm sorry, but, yeah, okay, so, so it still is in the same place? It was poured?
The wall is in the same place, we were not asked to move it. We were granted an easement and we pay a hundred dollars a year to keep it there.
We're, we're gonna take a short break.
Oh.
At request. So, I don't think we need really an emotion, we're just...
Okay.
Okie doke.
Just hang in. My pen now.
Oh, yes, your pen fell. Where'd it go?
I don't know.
Way over there.
Oh, there it is.
Oh. Thank you, Lorraine.
You're welcome.
The mystery of the lost pen.
I got another email.
He says, "You can set a filter on your email that it'll send them to a file."
Who said that? She's gonna have to do that. I'm lucky, I can open my email. And I'm, I'm still being directed as the Zonem Board of Appeals. I got, I got a title again. This one's a long one.
We're waiting, I have to show you my latest piece I made.
So beautiful. Oh my gosh, I love the colors, it's a great movement.
Yeah, yeah. I was really happy with it.
How long did it take you?
It's been about sixteen hours.
Oh, my goodness.
The blue, the blues are amazing.
Where are you gonna put it?
We have a house up in Maine, too, so... No, we want it in our regular house, I'm like, okay. Little bird, fixed a little bird.
I need to be on a computer.
Yeah, I have to talk to my UCA anyway.
Yeah, have them help you. I have no idea.
Okay, let me, let me ask you a...
Read them on my phone, I can't do anything.
Couple of questions, if Lorraine and, you ready?
Yes, yes.
Couple of questions about the existing house, okay? My recollection, it's just, it's a ranch house. If you were to be utilizing that for the business, what portion of that house would you be utilizing?
So for the last two and a half years, I've used the back bedroom, so it's one full bedroom as my office. I was not aware of the forty percent part until I came here and I would say it's less than forty percent at the Little House. At the Big House, it would still be less than forty percent when we were finished.
All right, where, where would employees come and go then, into that room or what?
No. They would just come to the back door, get their work papers and the keys. Basically, the same thing that we've been doing, but the difference, I mean, there's a good and there's a bad to not having the storefront, is the overhead. But that's about it, and...
Are you living in the small house now?
Yes.
And there's how many people living in there?
Just me and my husband and my brother who comes and goes as he pleases, he's fifty-four years old.
Yeah, where would you be storing equipment, tools, materials?
I would have to present that to them and they'd have to move it. Most of the stuff is needed in the, in the vans already. What this whole transition has done is, we've had to put a lot of things in storage. We're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna put that. We've put things in the basement in both places. We've, we did out a lot of stuff, but if you're telling me that I can't have anything in the basement in the Inu house, then I don't know what we're gonna do. I'm gonna have to get a huge storage thing and put it on my property. Because they have to have, I mean, the whole plan is to be able to use, it was our plan anyway, is to be able to use the basement for a workshop of some sort, even whether he's gonna be retired or not. It's just that's, it's not gonna be livable in the basement, it was gonna be more of a working area first.
How many square feet of space did you have when you were in Norwood?
How much?
I'm gonna, how much square footage were you leasing?
Oof, I don't, I wish I knew the answer to that. One garage, the same as ours, so if you have that paperwork there, that would be the same size garage. One garage, the same as ours, so if you have that paperwork there, that would be the same size garage. And-
So that's about twelve hundred square feet?
Yeah, it was a, it was a pretty large garage at, at Norwood. And then upstairs, we had a upstairs and a downstairs. It was much too much space, but we've been there since two thousand and eleven.
So in Norwood, you had twenty-four hundred square feet?
At least, yeah.
Now the vehicles that will be there on North Street, what sorts of vehicles are they? Are they regular vans?
Regular vans.
Truck, anything like that?
We have a small Ranger pickup. It's a two thousand and five. It's, that was usually s- at the Norwood location because it was needed to be there. It was just better. Everybody has, uh, they've all been, excuse me. All the vehicles have been at our house because my husband drives all of them. We have different types for different jobs. So the red pickup Chevy is used for carrying doors, picking up doors and bringing them wherever. So that's always at the house, it's always been garaged. Insurance terms or D, D R M V terms is, it's garaged in Foxborough. It's not garaged, it's always been in the yard. The, the parking area is big enough with the fence to have the three vehicles.
Tell me about the other vehicles, who we got a Ranger?
That's the, the Ranger, the Chevy pickup and the Econo van. It's not an Econo van anyway, Transit.
And does the Econo van have, does it signage on the vehicle?
Yes, there's signage on all three of those.
Are they commercial vehicles?
Yes, they are.
Commercial plates?
Yes. And they've all been parked there since the nineties.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't, you know, now we're into this now. But does it, just, just because something was-
Oh, I, I-
Doesn't make it right.
I wasn't, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand that. I just know that, that they've always, we've always had, we were always working. So our work vans are always at our house and back and forth and trading vehicles back and forth.
If you were to work out of your current house, then all the things that wouldn't fit in it from the garage, can they be stored at your storage, off-site storage place now?
We're at the max, I'd have to get another one. I mean, I had to take out another one, so we have three. I'd have to get another one and try to get done by April and then get it back in. I mean, our goal is to get the house done, that's been our goal all along. It's just there's been a lot of interesting things happening.
Well, you, you, let's forget the new house for now because you can't use that until such time as you get the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
And, and even if we allow you to utilize the existing house for, for business purposes, you're gonna have to come back later on if you wanna use the new, well, you're gonna have to come back later on because at some point the existing house is gonna be, going to be gone to get a special permit i- in order to utilize the new house as a home occupation, so.
I understand that.
So let's just-
I kinda understood that in the first-
Talk and we'll see what the board's appetite is as far as allowing the occupation to be utilized in the, or to be performed in the, in the smaller house. Go ahead. Uh, and are you done with your-
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, I have an opinion or a suggestion. I think we should continue this for a month. See what gets accomplished with permitted and everything else. And, uh, come back and see where we are and-
Good incentive.
And see, figure it out from there. I mean, I know that's not what you wanna hear, but I think there's too many moving parts going on with this. I do think it's unfortunate that you didn't look into all this many years ago about what you could and coulda do and-
We weren't planning on moving as abruptly. We've never been told to leave anywhere.
Yeah.
This was a, a business move on the landlord who has every right to have a-
Yeah, I get it.
But, uh, my husband's ego is a little chipped over it and, um, so he's been talking to all of his friends to see if there's something available in order to be able to store stuff and, and do things. And we did what we had to do in order to get everything out, so. When I first approached them upstairs, I wasn't even sure of, I, I was surprised that it was gonna wait until the seventeenth because I just figured I would have to know as much as possible, as much as, as soon as possible. So a lot of this I'm learning as we're speaking.
Can I, I, I do, I'm interested in following along with what you had said about continuing possibly, but I also wanna continue something you had asked before. So they, there are three commercial vehicles that are currently there. And how many other vehicles are there?
Two sports cars in the garage.
Okay.
Those are personal?
Those are personal.
And they're in the-
In the garage for the house, doesn't have the occupancy.
Yeah. They sometimes are stored other places, but they've been stored there for, during this move.
Okay, and so-
And then I have my Grand Prix that's in the driveway all the time.
Okay, so you have, uh, two sports cars, three commercial vehicles, and then what other vehicles, if someone were to drive by at any point during the day, what other vehicles might they anticipate seeing?
The employees' cars would be there and the other vehicles wouldn't. Like the work trucks would be on the road. So it just looks like people are parked in the driveway.
Right.
So there'd be six vehicles there?
I drove by this afternoon and that's what I saw.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a normal day.
Okay.
I mean, our neighbors have more vehicles in their yard all day long than we do. Everybody's out on the road.
So, so on, on a typical workday, there would always be?
Two vehicles, I would say. Always one.
Two, two vehicles of employees?
No, my brother's is not working right now.
The, the two, two employees who, who come on site.
Yes.
Right? They would be parked.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that just started, so I'm not used to that, yes.
You know, perhaps all the commercial vehicles would be, would be offsite.
Most of the time all of them are.
There'd always be at least three vehicles parked on.
Right.
Well, maybe what happens-
If anybody's driven by this past year, there's a lot of vehicles because they're all construction. Everybody's working there.
I saw, I drove by this afternoon, I saw, I believe it was two vehicles parked by the fence and then just one further up on it.
Yeah, the two by the-
What I'm wondering about is overnight.
Employees.
How much, how many vehicles are there overnight?
So it would be the three?
The three vans, or, well, I'll just call them that for now. The three trucks wa- are parked, um, uniform, parallel to each other, uh, by the fence.
Three commercial vehicles, two in the garage and one that you have in the driveway, so six.
Yep. And it, I mean, when you drive by, you really just see mine in the driveway. Or previous to this, you would see the red truck and, and mine in the driveway.
They would be parked, of course, it's all gravel now, the parking.
Yeah.
Cause I drove by at two o'clock today and I counted six.
Yeah, but we have three contractors at the job site today. So we had the electrician, we had the smokes. So we've been working on getting the fire safety all done first. That's, that was, and the electric. They're, they're, I feel like they're there every day.
Okay, so, so this is an interesting indicator that perhaps this brings us back to Dave's point of maybe we continue this because when we're asking about vehicles, we're learning about personal vehicles, work vehicles and construction vehicles. So there's an awful lot of stuff going on, as you said. And so maybe it is worth a discussion if you think that would be worthwhile.
To do a walkthrough.
To continue this until April.
What I can do is I can work with the applicant, um, and do a, and follow up with a report at the next meeting with the applicant if you can choose to continue the-
That makes, makes sense.
And I'll work with the applicant through the month to make sure that she comes into compliance, so to speak. Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
I mean, my, I'm, I'm actually reluctant to, even though I was asking questions about the smaller house, the existing house, I'm actually reluctant to, to go in that direction. I mean, if the rest of the board said, you know, be willing to do that and then when the new house is completed, you know, we start all over again.
I'm afraid we'll get stuck.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're gonna be-
Caught in the middle.
Yeah.
And to be honest about it, you know, it's a, it's been many, many years getting to where you are and they don't wanna see us getting a jam where now we've got something.
Yeah.
I don't wanna get caught in the middle.
Yeah, as I, I'm, I'm reluctant unless, you know, the board felt that, that that was a good direction. So I, I think the best thing is to continue with a month. Yeah, we meet again in April.
Yeah, I won't be at-
I, I appreciate that. I, I really do because I, I believe that that is the right thing to do. I mean, if I had, if I was sitting where you are, I would say the same thing, to be honest. I mean, I've had to be all of you every day in our journey in this house of construction.
Well, hopefully you get it done for retirement. That would be nice, right?
So hopefully someone wants to take on the job.
You wanna make a motion?
I move that we continue this application until next month.
April twenty-first.
April twenty-first.
Oh.
Second, you need to get a waiver.
Can you come to me?
Yeah.
Your birthday?
No, my mom's anniversary in heaven. This is why I'm wearing this today, so she's definitely with us.
Did you have the form?
She's the person that brought us to North Street. It was the Lily of the Valley that did it. So my, I, my question is, may I have permission to finish doing everything to get done with you? And the construction and get faster and-
You still have an open permit.
Right. I have a lot of open permits.
Yes, I know. My, my job is to make sure you come in compliance.
Okay.
So, and that's what I told the chair, the board.
For twenty-first?
I will work with you. You can call Lisa on Monday.
Okay.
And she'll, she'll schedule a time for me to come out there and I can walk with you and we can go through it.
Oh, I appreciate that so much.
Yep.
It, it's, I was unaware that you weren't there for the final on the inspection. Someone walked through, so I'm gonna ask Ed first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
Uh, the June date would be when? Yeah, as far as the, I'm gonna extend the time to-
For insulation stuff.
June would be one, two, three, uh, June sixteen.
We went through a permit.
I'm sorry, fifteenth?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Of the VAMP or in our permit system. I don't know if it got lost in transition.
I'm the person that puts those permits out for everything.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, we got an upgrade to our system.
No, I mean, for me to find out this way is just like a, what?
But I, I got it written down there in the last time it was-
Sign this please. So we're gonna continue this just to next month.
This year.
Yeah. Okay, so same time, same place?
Same time, same place.
Right?
Same.
Looks like it then.
I really thank all of you. I mean, this is a very difficult, unique, I'm trying to be nice because I've had the patience of Joe during all of this. It will be beautiful when we make, make it.
Just work with him. Make sure your contractors-
We look forward-
Make sure your contractors work with him.
Yes. And we look forward to hearing about all the successes in April.
Thank you.
He could be your best friend right now, just make sure that happens.
Now I do.
Okay, um, just a couple of things. So, we're, we're done.
Okay, so I can leave?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Minutes, anybody got any questions on the minutes?
I hope we approve them.
I can call Lisa in the morning.
Okay. Um, on, on the Moi Street.
Yep.
So there's engineering work that needs to be done. And Phil Buckley suggested to Page Duncan that it would probably be late April, early May before an application was filed. Diana has the Conservation Commission decision, been appealed yet or?
Yeah, they, they, uh, they brought it there today.
So there's an appeal for the determination the Conservation Commission made as far as where the river begins and ends and all that kinda stuff. So it's conceivable that's going to delay, delay things even, even more. However, in the possibility that they will file in April or May, uh, what I'd like everybody to do is to send to Diana your vacation plans, say between beginning of May and end of September. And after Diana gets that information, Diana, you include yours, Paige's, Gabby's and Scott's vacation plans. We'll do what we can to work around vacations.
I did figure out that there are five Thursdays in September.
In September?
Every other, or every other week.
Oh, we can squeeze an extra meeting.
And there's five in, in June, so. So we'll, we'll just work around things.
I got vacation in September.
So do I, but, but it won't, it won't interfere with the meeting.
Yeah.
Mindful.
That's it for me.
I move for adjourned?
Second.
On paper?
Tell him he can kill the camera.
Paul, thank you, we're done.
Thank you.